Okay, are y'all ready? All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led today by the King George Elementary School Kindness Club, I believe, followed by a moment of silence. Please be seen. Although Kindness Club, what would you like to share with us today? It's always exciting to hear what you have to talk about.
These are some of the projects that we've gotten this year. Send them back so you guys can see it.
Okay.
So our focus on self-esteem. We focus on staff and school, student morale, and community outreach. Does anyone want to talk about a project we did that was their favorite? Go ahead, Tate. This is Tate.
Pitting together eggs.
Putting together eggs today.
Eggs, like Easter eggs. Very good.
Anyone else want to? Maddie? How about the plants we did last week or two weeks ago? Okay.
Last week, we planted flowers in the front garden.
Cool. What kind of plants? What kind of flowers? Do you know?
Annials.
All right, so lots of flowers. Good. Very cool.
Color.
Color, that's right.
One of my favorites was collaborating with the preschool. A couple of months ago during Kindness Week, we took our fifth graders over there and we did a kindness lesson with them. We did a project collaboratively and we presented it and now it's hanging over at the school board office.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we're doing great things, changing lives every day.
Awesome. Well, thank you for coming and share that with us this evening. Do you want your trifold back?
Yeah, I can take it back.
Right now? Okay.
We don't have to do it now. It could be later, whenever.
Yeah, we can.
And we have a sweet treat.
Yes, okay. Ooh, sure do. I'm gonna look real funny up here chewing it. Thank you. Hold on to it.
Thank you. Now give it to my grandson.
I'm not gonna be so generous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, next this evening, I believe we have Ms. Churchburn with us here this evening to talk about the Kids' Heart Challenge.
One good evening. I always love getting to see you all in your smiles. And I want to know if the Kindness Club will take, you know, new members? Because I would love to join the Kindness Club if you're still accepting new members. And, you know, American Heart Association is kind of copycatting you because we had a challenge this year for our students to join their teams in all of our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools to choose a challenge. And one of them was to be kind. And so we'll have to all try and follow in your footsteps. So King George has been one of our longest-standing, most loyal, most impactful, most wonderful heart-partner school districts in Virginia. Dr. Benson, you know how much American Heart Association appreciates you and all that you do, helping us promote heart health and wellness, physical, social, and emotional wellness. Everything that you all do is just incredible. So I just wanted to just, I know the school year isn't over yet and not even all of our schools are done with their American Heart Association Challenge programs yet. But I just wanted to share a little more good news. You already got some to start off your meeting, but I wanted to let you all know that our schools, once again, have been incredible heart partners to American Heart Association. I haven't even shared with you what they've all done to this point, Dr. Benson and the school board, but I know you all will be so proud. Like I said, we did have the opportunity for our students to join their teams within all of our schools this year, elementary, middle, and high school. Middle school, I don't believe, has done theirs yet, but it's early in the school year still. We're not to the end yet, so these numbers will very likely change as well. But I wanted to let you know, to this point, thanks to the support, obviously, of you all, Dr. Benson, our wonderful administrators, Ms. Collins, and I might mispronounce her name, but Ms. Bush, I believe, from the middle school, Dr. Boyd, Ms. Latney Allen, Mr. Monroe, Mrs. Howard, Dr. Brown, Ms. Sandy Elliott, Mrs. Cowan, Mr. Steyer, Mr. Ritchie, and Ms. Tresslow. You all have led your schools through this program and are incredible contacts at our schools. Ms. Lisa Tate, Mr. David Baker, Jennifer Tonetti, and Heather Memms all have done an incredible job. We had, at this point, we've had 372 students within King George County Schools all sign up to choose our challenge, to be more active, taking care of their hearts, being kind to their hearts and others. So incredibly impactful. And our schools in total, at this point, have raised in life-saving donations for American Heart Association $21,752. So just incredible, just amazing. In a year, you know, we just didn't know what was gonna happen. We always give everybody the opportunity, but once again, our King George County Schools have stepped up. And I have to share with you, in our Potomac Elementary School, not only did they make such an incredible impact, but they have set their new record this year, which is just unbelievable. Potomac Elementary, led by Heather Memms and Dr. Brown and Ms. Elliott, have had 278 of those students sign up and choose a heart-healthy challenge. And they alone raised $16,725.45, which is just astounding. So anyway, a big thanks to all of them. We know, just getting the word out, getting the messaging out, when they do our program called Finn's Mission, named after our little friend Finn, who's our national ambassador here in Virginia. First grade this year, first grade this year, just a little miracle. We make an impact in getting to reach the families with our CPR and our warning signs truly does help to save lives. And it teaches our next generation of kids how to be lifesavers themselves. So I thank you all. Sorry, from my heart, I thank you all so, so very much. And I don't have my little plaque yet, because it's still early in the year, but I did bring a banner and I don't know if you'd be willing to take a picture with me, Dr. Benson. Okay, I want to brag about you guys on social media. So I'll use this picture. Sorry. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Churchburn. I know my son, it was his birthday last weekend, he got some new Playmobil toys. If anyone's familiar with Playmobil, and one of them is a police station. There's this little guy with a parachute and he likes to throw them off the deck and he parachutes down. And he liked to fold them up and he threw them down and the little man landed on the ground and he ran down, got him, brought him back up, brought him on the table and did CPR on him. So it sticks. It was cute on this little figure.
I just hope you reminisce it when you thought.
I know. Well, I'm not jumping off the porch, so got that going for me. Thank you. All right, hard to beat that. Okay, so now we'll move on to our public and employee comments. Ms. Frinko, do we have any public comment? No. And none online? Okay, well, that makes things easy. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Negative? All right, so moving on to our consent agenda. So this evening, for consideration, we have minutes from the February 28th, 2022, public hearing, regular meeting, March 23rd, 2022, special meeting, work session, and March 28th, 2022, regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
We need to clarify whether, looking at the packet, are we voting on the minutes for March 28th as amended or February 20th as amended, or, you know, which one, which version we're looking at?
Okay, so per the agenda, I think they're the regular ones. So if we want to contemplate the 28th, those meeting minutes, maybe we could approve the other two and then have a discussion about the 28th, simplify things?
Yeah, let's pull those out to discuss then, please.
What was that?
I'd like to pull up the February 28th ones from the consent agenda to discuss separately.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the March 23rd and March 28th meeting minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye? Ms. Bush, okay, motion carries. All right, so that was for March 23rd, March 28th, so... You're right, we didn't, but we all voted for it, so I think we're okay. All right, okay, so the... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'll second it.
There we go. All right. All right, so the February 28th meeting minutes, then, Mr. Rolls, did you want to comment?
Yeah, it's simply, what we discussed last time is that I had gone over them. And a few things caught my eye that were significant, things that I wanted to address that meeting. And so I saw that they didn't, it wasn't written as I had recalled. But of course, looking a month later, I wasn't going off my memory simply. I saw that. So then I went ahead and re-watched the videos, specifically the section on the COVID protocol. And then I went through and made the updates that I sent to you all, I believe, the night before the meeting, didn't anticipate us approving it last time. But now that we've had a couple of weeks to look at it, hopefully you've all had a chance to review that, look online, and compare it. And yeah, so if, if you see anything where you watched it, you see it's inaccurate, then obviously, let's discuss that. But I believe I went and watched it and it should all be completely in line with what's on video online.
Okay, so I would ask again, I guess, Ms. Rolls, I think we talked about this last time. But so this, what you have captured in the meeting minutes are not verbatim what was spoken, but your interpretation, your summary of the meetings, are correct for these sections?
Correct.
Okay, so it's still not an actual account, it's just a different account from that which Ms. Frinko captured. So I would comment on the portion about distributing copies of the draft King George County School Board norms and protocols. They're not actually draft, they don't say draft, so I would request that that be moved, since that's not what was stated during the meeting. So I would prefer we still stick to the changes that are to content and not re-summarizing. Do other board members have opinions in addition to what was discussed in our last meeting?
I think it's important that if there is part of the content, again, that actually affects a decision moving forward or something, then, and it was a mistake made, that that would need to be corrected. And I agree, in overall summarization, leaving that to Terry is fine. But if there's something specific, such as maybe somebody said there's 20 and there's really 25 or whatever, then that needs to be changed. So I guess, talking, listening to Mr. Rolls last time, is there anything specific in your comments and changing things that you feel are really important that needs to be there? Or is it just the summary part? In other words, could you take just a few things out of what you said needs to change and say these are crucial?
Yeah, I didn't change anything that I didn't think was important. But I guess to focus on, for example, something that is particularly important. Well, I mean, I guess to take a turn here, so the first student in blue area you see marked up, I did have concern from constituents about the disparate treatment between students. And I'm sure it's all getting a little hazy now, all the details about COVID. But there was a concern about, we're doing one from like five days versus 10 days. And we're talking about, if they get tested, then we'll measure the five days, but that they don't get tested, then we treat it differently, then maybe it's gonna be 10 days. So that was, that first correction was about that.
So you're saying the number of days was incorrect?
There wasn't actually a statement about the number of days.
There was.
In the first section?
The first one, it was, you talk about what he was looking at administratively, and it was that general issue. This is roughly in chronological order for the summary, just to try to keep it, make it easier to understand. So that was just talked to, as far as Dr. Benson's reference, trying to deal with that administratively. But then, that is related to, if you skip down towards the bottom, when it was my turn to ask questions, I did ask further questions about that, to make sure that we were very clear. And so with that paragraph that starts with, "in response to a question from Mr. Rolls", just to be clear about at what point in the conversation it was, if you see there, part of the parts crossed out is talking about 10 days of isolation. Because I think the way it was written, you could be interpreted to say that we were saying that it is still 10 days. And if that was the case, then I would have further discussed that at the time. But what was said instead was that they were aware that there was potential conflict and they're gonna look into it administratively, and I was satisfied with that. And so that's why we ended the discussion, and so I wanted to see that captured in here.
So it sounds like the first, so it sounds like the first blue part, at that point in the meeting discussion, there wasn't a conversation about actual numbers of days. But that, excuse me, in the second part about the, what is that, the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, about the difference between that a student can come back after five days of isolation without the need for a negative test, they have to check to be sure. So that versus the 10 days, that sounds to me like that's a content change, like a correction to the conversation. Is that accurate, that one, that part of it?
Right, they all are. So yes, that is.
So that's not an interpretation, that's a correction, okay? But the other, the rest of the edits, which of those are content versus interpretation?
Again, I think they all are. So above it was specifically talking about, okay, we realize, it's easy to talk about policy and think, okay, this makes sense, and then give it to the administrators to implement, and like, okay, some of these things don't necessarily make sense or you find holes in what we're trying to do. And one of those was how we treat somebody who's sick and we don't, they test and it's COVID or they're sick and we don't know for sure what it is, then are we gonna make them wait 10 days? And so that's what was mentioned early on, when, I think we started off with Dr. Benson, and he gave his summary of what we're at, the protocol. So that's when that first came up, and so that's what was that first paragraph, have to note that.
But so that's the re-summary, again, that's not, so you say that all of these are content versus interpretation, but I think what you're saying is that's not really the case. This is your summary of the conversation versus that in your mind is a correction of the summary that is provided to us in the packet, right? And I think that is verging on changing the intent of the role of the clerk in summarizing the meeting. So I would be in favor of sticking to the change that is the days at the beginning of the first, the fourth paragraph, but not including all the rest of it that is a different summary of the meeting. Other opinions?
So Mr. Rolls, you're saying in this first paragraph where you have it underlined in blue, this tested in terms of being able to return to school after five days, there was nothing in the original minutes about the five days, is that right?
Right, so I know it's a little bit hard to read this way, so this is just Microsoft Word track changes markup. So the underlying stuff in blue is new. The cross-out things that are in blue is what was originally there and was deleted. But there is a section farther down, I don't have the page number handy, but where the original is there unchanged, if it's easier to read it that way.
So I think the fact that we're still discussing and debating the accuracy of the summary, I think makes it difficult to decide whether or not we agree on the summary, which is why I think we should stick to the contents. The content changes, which sound to be the discussion in paragraph four of the number of days.
Okay, I'll say, if you do want to look down, page seven is where it is in its original form, if it's easier to look at certain things that way, versus, you know, page three where it's markup. So yeah, I will admit that going through minutes is definitely tedious. It's not something I really want to be doing. I'll see, we haven't done this, it's the first time we've really done this. So that first change, I think, is helpful because before, it isn't real clear about what we're talking about. So it was really just a clarification. And I prefer it, but if we didn't have to include that, it wouldn't be horrible. I guess one other important change is also in that same paragraph that starts with, "in response to a question from Mr. Rolls", I mean, so we discussed the 10-day part, but then, Ms. Kinsley, or Madam Chair, are you saying that all the changes in that paragraph seem good?
No, just the changes to the first sentence. So I would recommend changing the first sentence of paragraph four, so adopting the changes and then not including the other changes. Like that one is a content change. And then sticking with the rest of the minutes as they previously were, originally were.
Well, I think it was pretty important later on there, too, where Dr. Benson, I think there was a few, did you end up going back and watching, were you watching that section online, out of curiosity?
No, I didn't. But I, from the meeting, I still, like, I know the last time I asked you if it was your summary or the content change, and you said it was your summary. So based on the fact that you're the one proposing the changes, stating that it was your summary, that leads me to believe that it's a summary versus a summary and not a content change.
Yeah, I don't really see the distinction between content change and summary, because the whole thing is a summary, that's what we always do for minutes. So I thought there were some inaccuracies in the summaries, that's what I was trying to clarify. But then also to capture key things that I came to the meeting wanting to address, and I wouldn't have been good with any discussion without a motion if they weren't addressed. And they were addressed, in my opinion, and wanted to show that. So another point in that paragraph was, going back, watching that section of the meeting, I think there was some confusion about what contract tracing meant. And so, but in the end, Dr. Benson clarified, so we're not contract tracing anymore, we're only doing general notifications, and that wasn't captured. I made corrections to capture that. I think that's an important point to have in there.
Yeah, can I say something? I think we keep talking about what Dr. Benson said or did not say. Maybe asking Dr. Benson to clarify something would be helpful.
Certainly.
I'd be happy to try. I just want to make sure, was this the meeting where the motion was made? I know that we began with what was originally stated, that there was, a student could come back after five days, however, they needed a negative test. But then, as the discussion continued, if I have my nights mixed up, then let me know. But as the discussion then continued, eventually there was a motion approved that adjusted that or amended that standpoint, if I'm correct. Or was this a different meeting?
Well, it sounds like a combination of things, that we did discuss it, but there was no motion.
Okay.
At this meeting.
Eventually, there was a motion to stop the need for a negative test. I think that's what, the only thing I brought up last meeting was I knew from the local health department, after five days, a student could come back, but the health department recommended that they have a negative test. And this board chose to approve, you know, re-entry with different requirements. And I guess that's where I think the differences are coming from, perhaps.
I think in the motion, that there was a discussion, and then part of it had to do, I think, with my motion, but then, Dr. Benson, you had said, you clarified things and then we all agreed. I'm not sure we changed the motion, but we all agreed with the way you clarified it, talking about the...
Yeah, there's no mention of a motion, either my corrections or the original version. So I think, you know, we obviously would have captured that in minutes if there was one.
I know there was direction given to not require the negative test after five days.
That's correct.
So considering we debated this at the last meeting, we're having the same conversation today, I would like to move to approve the February 28th, 2022, public hearing, regular meeting minutes as amended to include the change to the first sentence in paragraph four. Is there a second? Okay. Any further debate, Mr. Bush?
No, it's so, no, no further debate.
Okay, Ms. Hock? Dr. Cutright?
If I'm understanding you correctly, you want to keep the first sentence in the fourth paragraph?
The changes that Mr. Rolls proposed to the first sentence of the first paragraph, yes. So the track changes.
Yes, that's important, especially the section that talks about students not being able to return to school after five days.
That's the change.
That's important. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rolls?
See if there's anything else I should point out. Of course, the last section was where you and I both discussed changes, updates to the dashboard, having that restarted with certain changes. And it's hard to see here right offhand exactly how significant that was. Are you don't thinking that that part was important to capture?
I'm content with the summary as presented in the original minutes. Dr. Benson?
I don't mean to belabor it, I just, if the board is choosing to amend, I guess I feel a little caught, and that's not, as it's proposed, that's not what I stated. So if this is going to memorialize my statement, my statement should be accurate. And then perhaps you could add a second, another sentence, saying that eventually the board chose to give direction to not require a negative test after five days.
Okay.
Was that...
Yeah, so you amend your statement then, Dr. Benson?
I'm sorry?
Give how your statement should, what should it say about your statement?
I think as it was originally indicated was my statement. You know, and then my recollection is after that, the board's discussion yielded direction to me to not require the negative test.
That's correct.
Yeah, so if you could just state it separately, that I stated what I stated, and then the board concluded or gave guidance to what...
Not to require a negative test.
Yeah.
And that's...
Okay.
Does that sound better, Mr. Rolls?
I'm not going off my memory for that. I mean, I just went and watched it, and this is what I heard on the tape. So I can't say that I remember something differently now. I mean, this is the best I could do, watching it.
Okay, so I would like to amend my motion to say, to delete the changes, to return to the original minutes, stating that Dr. Benson, for paragraph four, saying, "Dr. Benson stated that he believes that a student can come back after five days of isolation without the need for a negative test", and then add a...
No, I think that, yeah, Dr. Benson stated...
Oh, sorry, sorry, but would need a negative test. Yes, return to the original context of the minutes, yes. Okay.
But then the board gave direction that they would not need a negative test, which was different than what Dr. Benson had stated.
So add that as a sentence after that?
Yes.
All right. Okay, Ms. Frinko, could you repeat that to us? When you're done writing?
Amendment motion to return to the original minutes, where it said we would need a negative test. The board gave direction to Dr. Benson that he would not need a negative test.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, is there a second to the amendment?
I seconded.
All right, any further discussion?
You're saying we gave direction without a motion? I mean, you didn't even do that.
Yes. I'm not saying it's always proper, but yes. Because we're clarifying motions that we'd already talked about in regards to COVID protocols. And so I believe it's appropriate. Especially since this is referenced to what Dr. Benson said, which she restated, and referenced then after that to what our desire was. And verify.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to our action items this evening, we have the 2022-2023 Special Education Annual Plan, Part B flow-through application.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last meeting, Dr. Bush came and presented this. This is an annual source of revenue for our school division. This is an annual source of revenue for our school division to support our students with special needs. So I ask for your consideration. If you have any questions, we're happy to try to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, we hope we can get an approval for this.
Certainly. Do we have a motion?
I have a couple of questions. Sorry, I read through it quite a bit. I hadn't, last meeting, I didn't have a chance. This time I did, so I have a few questions.
Okay, so I will say though, it was a discussion item last time. I understand that there may not have been all parties reviewed it, but it is an action item. So we can further debate after we make an actions, after we make a motion. So do we have an emotion? So debate is a part of the action, right? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the 22-23 Special Education Annual Plan, Part B flow-through application.
Do we have a second?
I seconded.
All right, so Mr. Bush.
Couple of questions, thank you. One is on the, and the page numbers, I'm sorry, it's different than this one than it was in the meeting when you presented it. But it's on the one that says annual plan, Part B flow chart, application policy statements. The fourth one down, to the maximum extent appropriate, children with disabilities will be educated with children who are non-disabled in at least restrictive environment. That's fine, and I think that's appropriate. That's the whole inclusion process. I guess my question is, my understanding is we have 11 special ed teachers and two paras, is that correct?
Oh, in the grant, yeah, I guess.
Yeah, in the grant, that's what I'm talking about. So do we, we don't have any pullouts? They're all in inclusion classes?
No, that's not, that's not necessarily the case. The, the check, the, what you're, what you're reading there is what we abide by based on federal regulations, that we have to follow all those federal regulations. But the people that we put in the grant are not necessarily inclusion or self-contained. That, that's not a stipulation.
It could be either place.
It could be either place.
Okay, that was my question, okay. Now, do we have a para or sped, a special education teacher in all of the classrooms where there are special education children or that's individual?
Based on their IEP.
IEP, correct. Okay, thank you. That's just clarification. Down the next, I don't know which one this is, where it starts with all children ages two to 21, where disabilities and need special education and related services and who are parentally placed in a private school or homeschool. I guess, that sounds fine, all of it, but I'm, I'm in conversations with several people who have given the religious exemption for attendance, which is not the homeschool exemption. Do you do anything with those who have given the religious exemption for attendance and helping if any of those are, have special education needs or not?
If they are, I guess if they are part of the homeschool population, then yes. But I'm not sure that any of them have come and requested. We are obligated under child find for any students that are educated in our community to review the child find process for those students.
But because there's an exemption, you may not even know who they are unless they came to you, is that correct? Okay, all right, just wanted to be sure. But they would be, once you do find out, of course, they would come under this grant also, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, a couple of other questions. The, in this particular grant, ongoing parental discussion, how often does that take place? I'm accustomed to seeing like, what's called, used to be called ARDS in several states, admission, review and dismissal meetings every quarter. I mean, how often do you meet?
Annual IEPs. So each child's IEP under federal regulations is reviewed annually. We call them IEPs here in Virginia. Texas is ARD. But yep, and then every three years, we review a child's eligibility for services.
So it's only once a year when there's, unless there's a change, correct?
At least once a year, however, a parent or the school would call an IEP if a student is not making progress.
Good.
Or for any reason that they might see that, that they need to.
So if there's no red flags, then it's once a year?
Correct.
Okay, good, that's clear then. In this per capita that was listed, $1,555, that a lot of that had to do with the, okay, let me change. I saw something here that was interesting to me, and that is that we're supposed to do something with birth to two-year-olds? I was a little confused. I looked at the child find laws of the Virginia code, and it says that each school division shall coordinate child find activities for infants and toddlers aged birth to two years inclusive with Part C, local interagency coordinating council. Do we do that?
So we work with Peds, our area, zero to two coordination, and that's called Part C. And so we are obligated by law to work with them for students who are between zero to two and who would be transitioning to our preschool if they require services at age two, two or three. So we, we work in conjunction with them. This is the time of the year that they let us know which students they'll be referring to us, who would either start as a two or a three-year-old. Who has an early childhood under an IEP. So we work coordinating with them, but we don't start them until they're two.
Right.
So we just work hand in hand with them.
Okay.
Have an MOE.
So use that other agency then to determine, okay, now that's good. Okay, and I'm sorry, please apologize. I'm just trying to understand more. And I, let me make sure, I've got several pages, preschool age children based on this. Okay, that was it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright.
Yeah, and do please, I'm sorry to interrupt, please understand, I'm not saying anything's bad, I just, for further understanding, okay?
Completely understand. It's very complex and lots of questions.
Dr. Cutright?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Mr. Rolls.
Yes, Dr. Bush, I'm looking at page 28 under the section 611. So, I'm sorry, Mr. Bush mentioned the $1,500, is that per student or is that for all the students?
If you're talking about for students who are private, private school or homeschooled, then that is a total for the students.
Okay, that seems shockingly inexpensive. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand where that comes from and the significance of that number. How important is it that that number is accurate?
So it, it is important. We can, we are obligated to set aside that amount for the year for those students. I can tell you, in the past, we have not expended all those funds. So each year, we request this grant from, these flow-through monies from the state. But we have two years to actually utilize those funds. So we are midway between last year's and the year before using those. So if we don't expend that 1,500 for the next year, then it moves on. So we still may have some residuals from last year that gets kicked into this year or next year to be able to cover the cost of those students. Generally, those costs run less than 2,000 as our review at each year. But we certainly can, if we need to, utilize a little bit more of those funds. That's just the minimum that we must set aside for those students.
Okay. I would say that I actually do have a child that benefits from this program and very, very impressed with the work you guys do. My, my child adores her instructor and has really just helped a lot, so, so thank you for what you do. That's all I have.
All right. Any second rounds?
How did you, I'm sorry, how did you talk so loud anyway? How do you, how did you determine the per capita? And does it change a lot over, from year to year?
Are we talking about specifically for the preschool, I'm sorry, for the homeschool?
Sorry, it was on page.
Population, or is that the MOE page maintenance of effort?
Let me get my glasses. I have to see where I've written. It was like, I can't remember, per capita, the total.
It's probably maintenance of effort. So we look at.
Yes, yes.
We look at the projections in the current budget, draft one of the budget that's been put before you.
Correct.
And we look at that information. And then we look at the estimates, which we don't really know, local and state for next year, what the projections would be. And then we get the per capita by dividing out the number of students that were on our December one child count as of December, minus the students who are already receiving services through our CSA funds. So we have about 30, 31 students. So we would subtract that number because it's a different pot of money that they're funded through. And so that's what we divide by to get that per capita. And it's just a projection to make sure that we're on track to expend more funds next year than we have this year for our students with disabilities. Because that's part of the obligation when we accept this funding.
Okay, good, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hawk. Dr. Cutright?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Rolls?
None.
Okay, so on the table we have before us to approve the 2022-2023 Special Education Annual Plan, Part B flow-through applications, application. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Moving on to our discussion items this evening, first we have the Carl D. Perkins Five Grant. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is another source of federal revenue that we receive each year. This is federal funds sent by way of the Carl D. Perkins Act. So each year, we need a motion approved by our local school board, basically assuring that those funds will be expended for the purposes that they are intended. So the copy of that plan is included in your packet. But we appreciate your consideration in helping us access these funds again this year so that we can purchase additional equipment for our students or replace equipment that is outdated or outmoded, in addition to the other smaller amounts that are dedicated to other aspects of the Perkins Fund. So happy to answer any questions you may have. And of course, it's a discussion this time, so you may want to look it over and then bring questions back next time.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Are there any questions? Mr. Bush? Ms. Hawk?
No questions.
Dr. Cutright?
No questions.
Mr. Rolls?
Yes, let me scroll back up to that real quick, and I do have you. So this looks like a new format, Dr. Benson. I was certain, read it and immediately started answering all my questions. Is this, has this been, is this a new format we have here as far as the presentation?
A new format as far as the federal applicant, or the application for the funds or the?
Well, just for presenting agenda items, the background, alternatives and the costs.
Well, you're looking at the cover sheet for the agenda.
Right.
No, that's simply just an executive summary or description of what the item is for both you all as board members and also for the, for the public. You know, oftentimes the, well, you can see this, in the case of this application, you know, there are many parts and there's lots of language. So we try to distill it down in a way that summarizes the, the nature of the funding in this case and the purpose of the funding.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, it was excellent. So I
Good.
I thought it was, thought maybe it was different than I'd seen before, so it's, thank you for that. So about, just out of curiosity, about how much might do we expect to get from this?
Fifty, I can find it, Christine, if you want.
Good evening. The numbers in this application are based on last year. And so for last year, we received a total of $52,851.91. And so we would expect to get about that approximate amount for this new school year. You know, give or take sometimes a thousand dollars or something in that ballpark.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all my questions.
All right, I have no questions. Okay, Dr. Benson, so is this time sensitive or can we bring this back for approval at our next meeting?
Next time is fine.
We can bring it back.
Okay.
I don't mean to, I mean, it's the pleasure of the board, what you want to do. But we, we, there's no urgency or deadline that we couldn't meet if you brought it back to your next meeting.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, and just in regards to that, there's several of these things that, I'm not sure when this was placed on the budget, excuse me, as an agenda items for us to read it. But I don't know if these things, when they're completed and when they're given to us. I guess the timing of all this, because I hate to keep, you know, saying we got to put it off to the next meeting, but it's important that we read through all this. And some of us will read through differently, but the fine tooth go and others will just simply read through it. So I'm just curious as to the time lag between when it's, in other words, when was this done and how quick we could get it as compared to when it's put on the agenda. Is that making sense?
I think once it's ready, we don't hesitate to put it on the agenda.
I submitted it probably two weeks ago.
Okay, no, I'm not, this is not blaming you. I'm kind of the timing of us to see it. But it wasn't on the agenda until.
No, it's been on the agenda the entire time. Well, with the creation of this meeting's agenda, it was on the agenda. And then when the board packet comes to us, that's when it's included. So we've had this since the packet was released last week. We're not going to get it provided to us in advance because it has to by law be presented to us at the same time as the public. So it's been in the board packet.
Since last Thursday, isn't that?
Yep.
Yeah, I knew it was there since last Thursday, but then that's probably the soonest, based on two weeks ago, that's about the soonest we could have gotten it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't wait on any of the federal grants, you know, once they are. And each of the grant managers, they work with the state contact. So, you know, there may be, you know, different requirements in different areas of the federal funding. But as soon as they're prepared, I know that they are anxious to get it before you all to get it approved so that we can move on, you know?
I just, this will probably be pretty common, so nothing, no common negative comment about you or even the special ed grant. Just that I appreciate that you are suggesting that we wait till next time so that we have time to read through it some more. Thank you.
Certainly. I would just add that the intent of it being a discussion item is that we are able to discuss it at this, the first meeting and then, you know, be succinct in our actions, okay? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hill. Okay, next we have the supplemental secondary transition grant.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is another good news for King George. This is a grant that Dr. Bush applied for, and this grant is a supplemental grant that'll help support our, help me if I go, go astray, Dr. Bush, but the way I understand it is for our recent graduates or students who are needing services after their ultimate year of schooling in that summer in particular. Certainly, currently, we have no funding to support like placement or support for those students as they transition from school. This grant would help provide some funding for that immediate, those immediate needs to help students transition after their final year of school. Those are, those students with exceptional needs in particular. Did I summarize that okay?
Yes, it's specific to post-secondary or post-employment, or post-secondary employment or education or training programs. We just are linking with RCC to be able to help our students in those endeavor and check back in with them because we are responsible for their outcomes a year after, and we do track that down. So we figured while we were doing that, it would be great to assist in linking them and their families to make sure that they are getting support if they need it.
This is a new grant, is it? We've not had this.
We have not applied for it before, no.
So kudos to Dr. Bush, finding this for us.
Certainly. All right, and my colleagues have any questions?
Yeah, this looks excellent, wow. Just curious, what kinds of things, I know you're just doing this, so you're not sure yet, but give me some ideas of the kinds of things that you would use this for?
So we met with RCC, one of the liaisons at the high school, Terri Abel, she's like workforce development, and she also does some of the evening classes for our high school students who are attending.
Okay.
Enrollment, but she's there from 10 o'clock on every day. And so she's willing, and she's there to help our high school students to link them with signing up for classes at the King George office or classes with RCC out in Warsaw or Glenns. And then also doing some job exploration, getting them connected. So what we would be doing is we have a certified special ed teacher who's going to contract with us as soon as we get the green light to get started, which will be in a few weeks here. And she's going to first start by calling the, we have about, I want to say 67 students who left us last year that we'll be checking back in with to see if they got a job, whether they're in training or whether they're doing some kind of post-secondary education. If they are, then we don't need to support them. We're going to go after the students that do need the support and contact their parents. This person will meet with them. Our contractor will meet with them and see what they want to do and what, how we can help link them either to a job in the community and help them find a job or how we can link them with Ms. Abel. Because RCC also does have some really great programs as far as workforce development and continuing ed classes that might help them get out with a certification that they are able to then be gainfully employed. And so that's where we're going to start. That's our first layer. Our second layer then is we have about 159 students that we are looking at for possible, who are going to be graduating this year. And then our students who would be looking to graduate next year that we would then also start working with. graduate next year that we would then also start working with that same process to, to see where they're tracking, whether they are looking, what they're looking to do and how we might be able to develop more things here in the community for them to be gainfully employed or again to reach some kind of certification so that they can be, they can be, you know, employed, because the statistics for people with disabilities who are employed post-secondary is, is not very, it's like thirty, forty percent, and so this is something that the state has really looked at and how, an indicator that we as a division are graded on, it's called Indicator fourteen, and it does this, just that, it looks at those three areas, we've almost met the state mark, but we still have a little bit further to go, and so we want to exceed that state mark, and we feel that this is something that will help us be able to help link those students who are maybe unable to connect, and I think the key part is really to include their support system that they already have at home in the process so that even as we fade out and they do, they are linked properly, that they still have the supports that they need, so we will be sharing this with our C R, our Special Ed Advisory Committee, and putting more information out to our families as we move forward.
Does this also include dropouts or not?
Yes, it does, so our, it's always our levers who were in special education, so even if they didn't graduate last year but they left us, then yes, they are on the list.
Okay, goodness, excellent, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. Ms. Hawk?
I just want to say thank you for going the extra mile to get this, it is incredibly exciting, to use your term, and productive, I think, because it's, it's maybe not a huge number of people, but it's huge to those families, so thank you again, Dr. Bush.
Dr. Cutwright?
Dr. Bush, you are to be commended for looking out for this group of students post-secondary, and I know as a former special ed teacher that this is an area that always needs improvement, so thank you so much.
Mr. Rolls?
Dr. Bush, I'll also say thank you, looking through this, I also, something that caught my eye was the fact that we're tracking these students, and I'm curious how well that goes, are we reliant on them to come back to us to report? I mean, how, how good is the reporting on the outcomes after a year, do we?
So we probably have fifty or sixty percent that respond back, we have gotten a bit more creative with how we are doing that, we're trying to get their cell numbers before they leave us, but we also will interview their parents or people that they know, we're doing Google Forms, sometimes our teachers, we will even reach out via Facebook, if we know where that student is and what they're doing, then we're able to complete the information for the survey, so we have in the past gotten a better response rate, but that is something that we are still looking to improve.
You mentioned Indicator fourteen, and what reporters that actually feed into that we're being graded on?
So that report is part of the Special Ed APR Annual Review Plan, I think it is, through the state, the state is graded as a whole, and then each of the divisions are also divided out, so if you go to Virginia Department of Education and you look on their special education reports page, then you'll be able to see what our report looks like in June, June one, that's usually released, for all of our indicators in special education, there are four, uh, fourteen, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bush, again for pursuing this, the risk of sounding like a deadbeat record, but I just had a question about the Indicator fourteen, thank you answered that, so, I think we're good, further comments, questions?
Oh, this is, this is one I don't think we need to wait on, but that's just.
Certainly, all right, thank you, okay, so next, our last discussion item this evening is our upcoming May eighth.
Does that require a motion, what she just?
Discussion.
And just?
So, so I, so I suppose the time-sensitive question applies to this as well, so it was bringing that back in our next meeting to approve satisfactory?
Or could we go to approval right now?
We can, it's?
I guess that would be, I would like, I would like to make a motion for time's sake, because this is not that long and it's not that much to read, that we approve the supplemental secondary transition grant as written.
Okay.
All right, any further debate? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you again.
Okay, moving on to our May eighteenth VSBA training session, so, so the board previously agreed to commit to a May eighteenth training session at the VSBA offices in Charlottesville, and we, there was a desire to bring the conversation back to get consensus from the board on our training topic, so we did, did receive an email today from VSBA wanting to set up the final discussion to, to solidify our training topics, so I know when I brought this up as a suggestion previously, my suggestion, recommendation was to have the board to value, use that opportunity to develop bylaws, I know that's something that this board and previous boards, the last board certainly, something that the boards are, have agreed that we're in need of and we're interested in doing, so that would be my suggestion, I don't know, everyone's had some time to think about it, are there any further comments, discussion? Mr. Rolls?
I, I looked at the list of offerings they had some time ago, but as I recall, I mean, there was anything that is obvious that we needed as, as much as talking about bylaws, but I think we did discuss, we first mentioned this months ago, that they could customize the, the session, and so I guess one thing that I would ask to add that we may do in addition to talking to bylaws, is like, I've noticed we, whenever we talk about making policy changes, we seem to be hesitant to do that, so, you know, generally end up directing Dr. Benson to make a regulation instead, and looking through the VSBA handbook, they talk about the role of the board and then versus the superintendent, and talk about, you know, policy being one of the main things that the school board does, whereas regulation is what the superintendent does to carry out those policies, so I think there's some discussion about policies, our role in setting that and legal concerns, anything else that might make us hesitant to make policy changes is something that we, we get to discuss.
Okay, so I, if I may, would suggest, based on the last board's, board, last board training session we did with the previous board a year and a half ago, the objective of that session was to develop the norms and protocols, and that took the entirety of the session, I certainly think all of those are valid, valid, valid points to discuss in a board training session, I guess, I know I had previously suggested that we commit to two dates, which would allow us to tackle a bunch of those things, I think if we went with bylaws, that there's a good chance that would take the entirety of a training session, but I, it may be a good idea, we could, we could focus on bylaws, and then if time allows, discuss policy changes and those sorts of things, and if we were not to, even if we were able to knock all of that out, I would be in favor of a follow, an additional training session at the next, of the board's availability, and we could continue tackling some of these topics, would you be amenable to that?
Uh, you know, I had mentioned before, the desire to do some testing online that would tell us about our, I forget what it was called, but basically it's just how we work to understand each other better, and so, yeah, I think that might be more cost-effective, since we're already looking at, and we've been told that our training budgets already have been expended, so I mean, just definitely think I need to look at the costs, you know, because the thing that I suggested is only at six hundred dollars, you know, a hundred dollars per person, so, yeah, we've, we've agreed to the one day, so certainly do that, but I think before we agree another day that's going to be over a thousand dollars, and I don't know what the exact cost has been, it was over a thousand for VSBA, that I want to discuss that, so obviously it's just discussion right now, that's my thought, I do have one thing to bring up, unless you want to, anyone else wants to comment on that?
Any further?
All right, how long is this, the meeting with the?
They, it's, it's at least scheduled for like five hours, we start at nine and goes till about two o'clock with a lunch break in the middle.
Okay, yeah, are we going to do some preparation before we go to that, such as, I know that a year or so ago, there were some bylaws that were, I think Ms. Hawk was on the committee, are we going to be doing some prep work before we go?
So I, my suggestion would be for myself or Dr. Benson, who received the emails coordinating the training session, to say if we were to go with bylaws, right, indicate to VSBA that we were interested in using our training session to develop bylaws, and then ask them, what is of, I mean, like, we have these things to use, right, we have a draft bylaws, you know, we could use our board of supervisors have bylaws, either way, we, I think we could come prepared with things that are already, our, our norms and protocols, right, documents that have already been generated, and then also get their input on what is of value, like what, what else is good for us to come with, they may have some templates to use, that sort of thing, I'm saying the first step is picking our topic, and then I can get back to the board after we solidify that with VSBA, what they recommend we come prepared with.
Okay, so would they, since there always, already a draft of the bylaws, would they look at that, or would this just be something we would review again?
So I, so my recommendation would be for us to start with asking VSBA, so the last time, last year, I reached out to VSBA to ask about the development of bylaws and the by, the, the draft bylaws that we have at this point in time, were actually not developed by the entirety of the governance, the governance team, which is the way they should be developed, so I would actually recommend not using those as a starting point, since they were not developed with the entirety of the governance team, they in fact excluded members of the governance team, so I would recommend we go in with a clean slate and potentially use others like other, you know, I think our board of supervisors, for example, they do a good, good job, they update theirs, they're posted on their website, I think considering we're all part of the, that would be an example, right, we could start with something like that, but certainly seeking input from VSBA as to what would make the, make the session the most beneficial and most, the best use of our time, and their time, would be my suggestion.
Well, yeah, that, didn't expect to hear that as far as developing it, because I thought, obviously getting in detail, it does make a committee is the best way to deal with all stuff, because us sitting here, the only way for us all to get together, obviously, is to have a public meeting and kind of go through all that as a public meeting seems pretty.
The, the training session will be, is
That one will be, sure.
As a public, right, it's still a public meeting.
Right, but if you start with nothing, I think there's very little chance we come out of there with something, would be my opinion.
Understood, but we don't have bylaws, so that's the point of it, right?
We have draft bylaws, bylaws, and to that point, I'd like to ask Mrs. Hawk, Ms. Hawk, you're, you did sit on that committee, right, to develop the draft bylaws?
The group that I sat on, I'm sorry, there we go, the group that I sat on was a, a group of people bringing information together, it was never a formally approved bylaw committee, it was an ad hoc information committee, that was how I would best describe it.
And how long did it take you to come up with those, because I've read through them and they're not bad at all.
They're not bad, I mean, it certainly, it is a combination of, of, of opinions from a, a small source of people.
But I, but how long did it take you to come up with those?
How long did it?
Yes. How many meetings did you have?
They were all done by Zoom, remember?
Okay, great.
Um, and I don't remember how many there were, some, some meetings would have only two or three people, other meetings would have larger groups.
It was like ten meetings or so?
I don't think it was that long, I can go back and find out if you'd like.
Well, the only reason I'm asking, I'm agreeing with, with Mr. Rolls, I mean, five hours to come up with a document that we would have all had input in is asking a lot, I think reading through something that some effort had been put into, at least one or two board members were part of, is valuable, rather than simply saying, and even possibly, I don't know whether this is appropriate, but even sending that, what we have to the VSBA, you know, to look at and say, because they may say, you know, just put this away and let's, just need to start from scratch, but if they say, this isn't bad, why don't we use some of this, but you make these changes here, wow, we'd have, we might be able to do things in two or three hours.
Right, so all of that, right, all of that is why I think we should commit to the topic and then consult with VSBA as to what makes the most sense, certainly I have addressed and with them previously the fact that we had draft bylaws from a bylaws committee, so all of that, all of those are relevant facts to present to them to get a recommendation for how we should proceed, so I think the first step is for us to agree the bylaws, assuming everyone is on board with that, are, is what we would like to tackle, and if we are not able to do that in five hours, then we can always schedule a second session, right, again, back to, I think, you know, so that would be, I mean, this is what we've got right now because we were only available for one meeting, so we need to make the best use of our time, obviously, so.
And they haven't gotten back, you, you haven't even told them this is the areas that we want to, you haven't mentioned we're good.
I, I think, I believe, when I originally asked them, I, like, like, topics such, I don't know what I put in the email, right, but like, to develop, what are the options for doing things like setting up bylaws, right?
You told them we already had a draft of, of one.
I did that last year, yes, we're trying to, yes, previously, when the draft bylaw committee was put together.
I'd like to just recommend when you talk to them is if they would consider looking in our draft.
Certainly, certainly, okay, so we're in, we're all in consensus, that'll be our topic, we'll seek feedback and I'll provide that back out to the board, okay?
Good.
All right, thank you, all right, moving on to our information items this evening, do we have any committee reports, Mr. Bush?
No.
Okay, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, I met with the Gifted Advisory Committee, I am sad to say that I neglected to bring my notes with me, so I will fill you in next time.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk, it happens, Dr. Cutwright?
No report, thank you.
Mr. Rolls?
Not for me either.
Okay, so I attended the Technology Advisory Committee last week on Tuesday, April fifth, so Ms. Hawk gave a number of kudos, especially to Steam Night last, last month, so I know we talked about that last week, but she was reiterating just what a, what a successful evening that was, so thank you to all that were involved, the bulk of our meeting was spent discussing the objectives and strategies for tackling the development of the new King George County School Technology Plan, so as we know, the old one is, the old one is outdated and we're going to be revamping, talking about how to, how to revamp that, so, excuse me, so it's our last, the last meeting was spent discussing how we wanted to tackle that, coming up with a plan for it, so we're going to meet again next month before the end of the school year to continue the process and come up, I think, with a, kind of a timeline of development for that, so, and that concludes my committee report, so Dr. Benson, you have a superintendent's report for us this evening?
Just a couple of things briefly, I want to first congratulate and thank our NJRTC program, I had a chance Saturday to, to attend their, their banquet, and, you know, each year they, they do kind of a transition ceremony and they recognize a special guest, but it's nice after waiting for two years to have that event back, and so my congratulations to all the students and staff certainly involved in the planning and execution of that event, I also want to thank Ms. Churchborne, who was here earlier, and all the staff who have helped support the activities in which our, our students engage to help support the American Heart Association, and, you know, I know what, one aspect that she, she didn't mention is that back to our schools, the American Heart Association, over the years, has donated equipment, you know, physical education equipment and things to promote activity and keeping an act, the active, healthy lifestyle for our students, so we appreciate that productive partnership, and then just one other reminder that this week we have, we have no school Friday or Monday of the following week for the long weekend around Easter, so that is it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson, moving on to our board comments, Mr. Bush, go ahead.
King George Elementary for what they did, I think it was wonderful as far as the, leading us in the pledge, and then also the Kids' Heart Challenge, that, that the Heart Association is wonderful, and especially Dr. Bush and what you've done with this, all the grants, and especially the supplemental education transition grant is outstanding, so just thank you so much, and the Kindness Club at, sorry, I just saw my note here, from the King George Elementary School, it's great what they're doing, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bush, Ms. Hawk?
I wanted to follow up from our last meeting with the, the, the thank you to social workers, because it was Social Workers Month at that time, each month, it seems like we have more and more people to thank, so I do want to say a, a thank you for the coordination that goes out to support the social workers, and, you know, we have only three of them, just like we have only one attendance counselor, and it takes every person working in every role to come together to support those people who are supporting you, I, I think the community of the school is very much like a village, so I do want to ask Dr. Benson if you would come back to us with some more information about the, the construction or deconstruction down at Potomac when you get a chance, that's all.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I forgot something, can I?
Certainly.
I just wanted to say I attended the ROTC, the Junior ROTC Ball, and it was fantastic, you know, I mean, my goodness, all the work that went into it, and Mr. Rolls and myself were both there as board members, and probably because of our past military, I don't know, but it was really, really well done, just commendations to I don't know, but it was really, really well done. Just commendations to, um, Major Callahan, right? And then also Sergeant Major, what's the name? I'm sorry. Sergeant Major, what's his name? The one? Yes, yes. Thank you. They, they did an outstanding job. Um, so anyway, kudos about that. Um, I did want to mention it. I'll put it on the agenda for next time. I want to have a discussion here, but I'll put it on the agenda just to kind of give a heads up to talk about the religious, um, exemption for attendance. I just think we need to look at that policy, but, um, I'll put that on the agenda for next time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bush. Dr. Cutright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to congratulate the Kindness Club for all their activities at King George Elementary that really boosts the students' self-esteem and morale. And I'm glad to see the Kids' Heart Challenge. Uh, the Kids' Heart Challenge prepares students by supporting their physical and emotional well-being. And last week I'd like to add was Assistant Principals Week. And I'd like to say thank you to all the Assistant Principals for all of their contributions to our schools and communities. And last but not least, the paraprofessionals. April 6th was Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, and I'd like to say our schools could not function without their support. Uh, last week I attended the Night of the Arts at Sealston Elementary School on April 7th. And I'd like to say a special thank you to Ms. Howard, Ms. Cohen, the club sponsors, Dr. Benson and Dr. Boyd, uh, for the opportunity to share our student's success with the community. And it was fantastic to see all of these activities after two years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Cutright. Mr. Rolls?
I'll echo the other sentiments about, it's great to see the Kindness Club here. I mean, who couldn't use a little more kindness in their lives? It's a great club to be part of, I'm sure. And also kudos to the, the Kids' Heart Challenge. Hearing kids get out, get exercise and all solid work they did raising those donations. Well done. And as Mr. Bush and Dr. Benson both mentioned, uh, I had the pleasure of attending the Junior ROTC Ball this past Saturday. Uh, very impressed to see all the kids who came out from prom Friday night, out to the wee hours. I, I can't even imagine how late they were up and then came, turned around, came to the ball the next day. I was going to complain about being out until one, but that's, you know, that's, that's like for an old man, but, so, I don't know, I made it. Um, and so, yes, of course, this is the first ball of Major Callahan's tenure as the commander of Junior ROTC, you know, due to COVID, but you wouldn't know it from the execution. It was pretty impressive what those, the cadets did. Put on a great show and the discipline and the, and how responsible these kids are was amazing. I just, dozens of things I just noticed, um, how courteous they were, aware of other people, uh, good leadership. I mean, you look at these kids and it just makes you, encourages you about the future. These are the, the kids who assume will be the adults in our community, ready to take, be free in our society, but also be responsible contributing to making King George a great community. So I was very encouraged by that. And, uh, shut back for the, the One Book One School, uh, initiative. I think it's a great idea and very much enjoyed reading about Humphrey. He's got, that's one Hampshire's got some serious people skills. I've been very impressed with that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rolls. Um, I don't think I have much to add this evening. I was certainly impressed with the tales from Ms. Churchborne about the Kids' Heart Challenge. Um, pretty impressive. The Potomac has had such a, um, such a, such a turnout. Um, I know my children attend Potomac and I hear about the Kids' Heart Challenge on a regular basis. I see all the little bank with the little heart heroes and I get to hear about them. So anyway, very, lots of fun stuff. I know they're all excited about that. So, sounds good. Um, and that's all for me. So at this time, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to State Code Section 2.2 dash 3711 dot A dot one for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitutes, resignation, and retirements of employees for the school board.
A second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in closed session.
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2 dot 2 dash 3712 dot Delta, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under this chapter. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion by the closed meeting, by which the closed meeting was convened and were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Second and certified.
Mr. Bush?
Certify.
Sort of a.
Certify as well. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in open session. Do we have a motion to approve personnel as presented?
So move?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, we're now adjourned.